...have a conversation about the budget specifically. But as I try to always do with these town halls, which I do once a month, also happy to take questions on any other subjects that are on anybody else's mind. My name's J.C. McCauley.
I'm Naisha McCauley. And you're watching AccessTV.org.
So what I'm going to do is start out and just give a little bit of a background on where we are in the budget, why we are, where we are, and what we've done over the last year, as well as what we did in this last budget cycle. And then to talk about what we're trying to do up at the state, up at the state Capitol, to fight hard to get what we think Hartford deserves and what we think Hartford is owed, given the amount that we do for the region and for the state. So I think you all know, because I've talked with all of you in one form or another, that the city of Hartford has been facing financial challenges for a long time. That's not nothing, that's not anything new. But there are some things that are different now. One of the things is that as we faced those financial challenges year after year, we did things to deal with them. We raised taxes. The city, over the years, starting back in 2005 or '06, started raising taxes higher and higher. And our property tax rate, our mill rate, went from the mid-40s to 74.29, whereas today, which is by far the highest in the state. And then we did other things as a city in the years that led up to now. Selling parking garages that you get cash one year, but then it's gone forever. Or restructuring the debt, like refinancing your home, except in some ways worse, because it's just pushing all the costs out into the future. Making it easy for a few years, but then making it a lot harder down the road. Those are some of the things that we're dealing with. And the reason we're at a different point right now is that those tricks have been used up. They were never responsible to begin with. They were never good ideas to begin with, but they've been used up. We can't raise taxes above 74 mill rate in our city without, I think, just killing every small business that operates in the city and losing a lot of jobs. And we have cut deeply in a lot of places. As we've faced this crisis, we knew we had to make long-term, sustainable changes, so we made a lot of reductions over the last year. But at this point, I think we've cut enough. And I don't think we should continue cutting and cutting, because at a certain point, you're not delivering your basic obligations to the residents of the city of Hartford. So what we've put together this year, in the budget proposal that I put forward to council, and then in what council sent back, which was pretty much the same, is put forward a budget that we say, that we believe is the, a basic services-only, responsible budget. It represents the limit of what we think we can responsibly cut without doing real damage to our community. And it refuses to raise the mill rate, because I'm not going to increase taxes on a community that's already overtaxed. So what that means, though, is that we've got a hole that we can't fill on our own. After making all the reductions that we think are responsible, while continuing to deliver the basic services that our residents deserve, and after making the decision that we really can't increase the mill rate when it's 74, we have a $50 million hole. Now, to put that in perspective, we could eliminate, and I'm not proposing to do this, but it's just important to see how big it is, you could eliminate your entire fire department, and you'd still have a large deficit. You could eliminate your entire police department, and you'd still have a large deficit. We could have, if we had not a single dollar of debt, we'd still have a deficit. And if we didn't owe a single dollar of pension, we'd still have a deficit. That's how big it is. And that's why it's just not responsible for us to try to close that gap at the local level alone, because the damage you do to the city, if we tried to do that, would be too great. So what are we doing instead? We're going up to the state Capitol, and we're arguing for what we think our state should do to help make sure they're working with us to put our capital city on a path to success and stability and growth. Now, I talked about some of the things that have been done over the years to patch over, or put some duct tape or bubble gum on the problem. But I didn't really talk about the root of the problem. The root of the problem is that we have less taxable property in the city of Hartford than West Hartford does. We've got less taxable property in the city of Hartford than Glastonbury or Manchester, which are much smaller than us, and don't face anywhere near the level of need or the level of service obligation that we do. We have far less taxable property than we need to sustain ourselves. And one of the reasons for that is that half the property in the city is non-taxable. It's nonprofit property, it's state government, hospitals, universities, it's the trash-to-energy power plant down in the South Meadows that burns trash for 70 towns around the state and does it in our city, it's the MDC sewage treatment plant, which treats the sewage for eight towns around the region and does it in our city, it's the airport that's down in the South Meadows, it's the regional market, it's all of the social service agencies that provide services to our entire region but are located in Hartford. All of those things serve people well beyond Hartford. They serve the entire state or the region, and yet they're located here and they don't pay taxes. And so that's the heart of what we're arguing up at the state Capitol, is that if we, as a state, want to have a strong, sustainable capital city, we've got to recognize that you can't run the city on a tax base of a suburb. And if you're going to ask the city to be home to all of that non-taxable property that serves the entire state, then you've got to reimburse the city for it. The state has had a formula on the books for a long time, called the pilot formula, payments in lieu of taxes, which is supposed to reimburse us for non-taxable property. But that formula has been underfunded for a long, long time. And if it was fully funded, that formula's already on the books, if it was fully funded, we'd be getting $52 million more each year than we're getting today. And as I said before, our gap right now is $50 million. So that just puts in perspective why we are where we are and some of what we've done. And what we're doing right now, which is, on the one hand, drawing a line and saying, "We're not going to cut so deep that we can't deliver services to our residents, and we're not going to tax this city yet." And that means that we need the state to come in and help. Now, we're lucky to have a great legislative delegation up at the state Capitol. State Representative Arce, Angel Arce, just came in. He's fighting hard every day up there, as are all of our representatives. Representative Gonzalez, our newly-elected Representative Hall, Representative Vargas, Representative Ritter, along with Representative Arce, they are all up there working very, very hard. And our senators are, too. Senator Von Vera and Senator McCrory, who just moved upstairs there. But what's so hard about their job right now is that the state of Connecticut is facing its own fiscal crisis, its own budget crisis, at the same time we are. And that's why what we're dealing with is so difficult. If the state of Connecticut was running balanced budgets or had a surplus, it wouldn't be that hard to persuade people that we need to invest in the capital city, that they need to invest in the capital city. Our challenge right now is to persuade them that they need to invest in the capital city at the same time as some of their towns are getting cut. And I personally believe that that is the right investment, because I don't think you can be a suburb of nowhere, and I don't think you can be a strong suburb of a city that's not strong. So we're going to keep making that argument and keep fighting that fight, and I'm up there trying to work alongside of our legislative delegation at the Capitol almost every day. But my pledge to you, and I know our legislators would say the same, is we will not leave an ounce of energy, or an ounce of effort, or an ounce of whatever influence we can bring to bear on the table. We'll do everything we can to get the state to step up. But at the end of the day, I think it's important for everybody to understand that we have to make that happen, and if it doesn't happen, there isn't a way at the local level to responsibly solve that with the tools that we have. And so at that point, we'd have to have conversations about what other tools would we need, and what are some of the extraordinary things that we'd have to do. So my hope is that we'll get to a place of stability, and we'll do it in a way that protects our city, protects services, is responsible to taxpayers, treats taxpayer dollars seriously, and builds for the future rather than kicking the can. That's the goal. So with that, why don't I just open it up and have a conversation for, you know, as long as we want to go. And then, as I said, you're all welcome to come to the town halls over the weekend as well. But really appreciate your coming tonight, and I want to thank Angel Arce, who's here, for all the work that he's doing up at the state Capitol. We also have our police chief here, Chief Ravella, and want to thank him for being here. And if anybody has any questions that are specifically about police that the chief can address, I'm sure he'd be glad to do that. Either of us can do that. So like I said, any subject is on limits, is in limits. This isn't just about budget. But given where we were, and given that the city council just voted on the budget that I had proposed, and we're in the final days of finalizing that city budget, I wanted to give a chance to come out and talk a little bit about that process and where we are and what we're trying to do. Thanks for being here. Questions?
What's been cut, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, what's been cut from our budget?
This year? So let me step back. I mean, I look over the last year, because over the last year, the reality is that the budget we're likely to adopt this year at the city level is not all that different from the budget that was adopted last year. And the reason for that is we did all of the difficult things that we thought were responsible to do last year. We made some big reductions in personnel at the city. We eliminated 100 positions. Not all of those were layoffs, but a lot of them were. We reduced funding to outside organizations. We made some reductions in things like festivals and parades. And luckily, the community stepped up, funders stepped up, and so a lot of those things have been able to continue with private money instead of with taxpayer money. We negotiated some deals that are significant. We negotiated a new contract with our fire union, which makes some really big changes. It's going to save us $4 million next year. And it was a contract where our firefighters agreed to go without a wage increase for four years, and they increased their pension contributions by 50%. And they shifted to a high-deductible health care plan. For active employees, they went from 20 to 25-year retirement. They changed it retiree health care. They shifted the salary scale down for new employees. There were a lot of really big things in that agreement. So we worked over the last year to find those, whatever opportunities we could, to make some big structural changes. Now, I will say, we're still negotiating with the rest of our unions. One of our unions is actually voting on a tentative agreement today. But we still have a ways to go with some of our other unions, and I hope that we'll find those savings. But in the meantime, as far as reductions that we can make, aside from labor contracts, we've made most of those reductions the prior year. This year, we did do some additional things that are tough. So for example, there are reductions to some outside organizations, like the Carousel in Bushnell Park, or like the Business Improvement District in downtown, like Journey Home, which does tremendous work, like we had made some reductions to Hartford Public Access TV, which I think, at least some of which will likely be restored, some reductions on Dial-A-Ride and senior centers, again, at least some of which will likely be restored. But we made some additional cuts, all of those totaling up to about $800,000. I'll give you perspective, last year, we cut just under $20 million out of the city budget. This year, because there wasn't a lot left, we cut about $800,000. None of those cuts were easy, but just as the community stepped up and funders stepped up to make sure that a lot of those cultural events and celebrations could continue, I believe that we're going to be able to get private funding to make sure that a lot of those organizations can continue to do the great work that they do. And I've been making calls, and we'll be announcing some gifts soon. I think a lot of people recognize how important those organizations are, and the truth is that, as hard as it is up at the state legislature, and as hard as some of those town halls that I did in the suburbs were, there are a lot of people outside of the city of Hartford and a lot of companies who understand why Hartford matters, and who understand why some of those organizations that we had to step back from matter. And so in a lot of those cases, I think that as we step back as a city from funding them with taxpayer dollars, that there's going to be private support to make sure that they can continue. And the truth is, I think that's the right way things should be done. I mean, nonprofits should not, most of the time, rely on a city that's in fiscal distress. It makes more sense to try to find those philanthropic dollars or those foundations that are willing to support the good work that they do. So that's a quick answer to your question.
Is there any way, we have so many nonprofits, not just hospitals, but all these little nonprofits, and they all do the same thing, and they step over one another. It's like, so if they don't have good grant writers, they're not going to be able to exist, because we're not going to give them any anymore.
Well, I think you raise a really important point. Not all of them step over each other. Some of them are doing unique things. But it's true that we have a lot of nonprofits, and there is a lot of duplication. And I've had some conversations with a number of them. The foundation, the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, I know has some of these conversations. But it is true that you have some organizations that are doing good work but don't have the capacity to raise the money, and others that do have the capacity, and probably makes sense if we can build some better partnerships. And that's going to mean that some folks are going to have to be a little bit more willing to give up some control, right? I mean, one of the things, we have so many different organizations, and I get it, everyone is invested emotionally in their organization, and that's good. We want people to be invested. But the truth is, we probably do need to be building, they probably need to be building some more partnerships, so that the ability to get a grant writer and go after that private money that's out there is stronger.
Well, the community renewal team, we know, is the largest in the league. I mean, it's huge. And they have grant writers and stuff. However, they were started back in the '60s to renew, to renew Hartford. They haven't renewed anything. It's gone the other way. And it's like, I just don't get that organization. And they get a lot of money. They've got grant writers, they've got big departments, they're all over our city, they're all over the towns. And the CEO makes more money than Aetna or Traveler CEOs.
I don't know about that.
Well, she does, it's over $300,000. Lena makes way over it, so did Mr. Puzo. But it's crazy. This is an organization that started, but they really haven't renewed anything.
Well, look, there are a lot of organizations out there, and I think CRT has some really important programs.
I'm not saying they don't. They don't pay a penny of tax dollar either, Mr. Mayor.
Right. And we don't, as a city, at least on the non-Board of Education side, they don't really get city money, at least not much. And so, but I think your broader point about organizations needing to build the capacity to go after some of those private dollars, so they're not reliant on a city that can't afford to fund them is really important.
I don't think they renewed anything.
Yes.
I want to comment on public safety, the broad spectrum of public safety, from the traffic enforcement, to your burglaries, your robberies, your car theft and whatnot. It's become ever increasingly difficult to perform that task when you take a look at your police department manpower numbers presently. We are in excess of 100 men down, am I correct?
It depends where you started from, but that's right. If you look at our high point years ago at 500 officers, that's absolutely right.
What do we have right now?
We've got high 300s.
Okay. So it's, I'm correct. It's around 100, a little more, maybe a little less. You cannot address the problem that we inherit with that short number of manpower. However, being that of what it is, we need to do something to place ourselves in a broader picture of enforcement, of addressing the things that heretofore we used to do on a everyday basis. This is something that I feel, that I know, that's presently not being done. The average man out there today needs to step up to the plate and be a little bit more active. I find a big shortage of that. And in part, supervision could be partially to blame, because your manpower is only as great as the supervision behind it. There's a couple of officers you have, I kind of admire who I think have an excellent job. You take Foley, relatively new deputy chief.
He's been a while.
Well, Foley is good. I watch him, he knows the area, he canvases the area, and the men under him, he expects for them to step up to the plate. Well, the plate's empty, and you need a little tighter supervision, because it's not going to get better. The one area that's a big shortfall is traffic enforcement. You've got the way they drive on the Britton Avenue, Maple Avenue, Auburn Avenue, as if there's no police around monitoring their activities. That has to be addressed.
So let me take parts of those questions, and I'm going to ask the chief to talk about some of it, too. On the question about manpower, you're absolutely right. One of the problems is that the city didn't recruit for a long, long time. So it's been, it was a number of years, about five years, that the city didn't recruit any officers. And meanwhile, we had a lot of officers reaching retirement age and retiring. So as our numbers grew, we weren't bringing the next generation up. What we've tried to do is begin to catch up. So we've brought two classes of recruits in over the last year, and we're going to, hopefully, bring two more classes in this year. As we've done that, we've also tried to make our classes more diverse and better reflective of the community that they serve. So we brought a class on of 16 officers, recruits, this past, a few months ago, and about 60%, more than 60% of those recruits were minorities. Three of them came up through our cadet program. There were Hartford residents who came up through the cadet program. And we've been aggressively going out to recruit Hartford residents, and also beyond Hartford. But we've really been doing a lot of outreach to try to get more Hartford residents to apply for and to get through that application process. So we're determined, and I'm determined, to make sure that we are building that force and catching up. But the reality is, when you've gone that long as a city without recruiting, and there are so many officers that are reaching retirement age, it's going to take a little while for us to catch up. At this point, when we recruit, we're not actually growing our force, we're just recruiting to replace officers that are going. And hopefully, over the period of a few years, we'll get to the place where we're actually growing those numbers again. That's a goal that I've had from the start, and it's a goal that the chief has had from the start, and we're going to continue to pursue it and continue to recruit aggressively. We actually, if you're watching this, or if you're here tonight and you know of anybody who might be interested in applying, we've still got an application round open right now. It's open until Monday or Tuesday of next week. Get them in by Monday. I don't remember if it's Monday or Tuesday. Tuesday. Get them in Monday, anyway. So if you know of anybody, whether it's a friend, or a family member, or a neighbor, and they might be interested in serving on the Hartford police force, please let them know that there's an open application process right now. And we're going to continue to do those application processes, continue to reach out to residents and try to coach them, get them prepared for the process, and we're going to continue to recruit to get those numbers up. The point that you made about supervision, I'm going to ask the chief to come up and address those with you directly. So Chief, you know, as I do in the '80s and '90s, we got into trouble, right? With grand juries. And those grand juries stem pretty much around officers doing the wrong thing, because there was no supervision. We recently brought on 10 new sergeants. We're trying to reduce the supervisory ratio to 1 to 4, 1 to 5. Unfortunately, sometimes it crops up a little bigger. But I agree with you, we do have to do better on the supervision angle. The other point you brought up was the traffic angle. I put out the traffic squad all over the city as much as I can. Where on the Britton Avenue are we referring to?
From the moment you step into Hartford on the Britton Avenue, it's like the racetrack.
Beginning at Washington, or where are we? All the way down the west end?
Go to the west Hartford line.
So the area between Newington and the west Hartford line, Hollywood.
And Washington Street now.
And what?
And...
Washington Street. Washington? That's a long street. I'll have them out there.
But it's something else. And I think it's good to have monthly meetings with, maybe with some officers who have retired already, but they left with a good reputation, to speak to the officers about stepping up their productivity when they wear that uniform. I don't see, on the whole, there are a few officers who are constantly moving and doing the right thing, but there's a lot that are hardly moving. And this is where supervision come in, because your manpower productivity is only as great as the supervision that you have out there.
All right. Part of this conversation is for next week with us, right? Okay, good. We'll get to it. Thanks, Chief. You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Michelle Watley, and I live in the north end of Hartford. I had to make it my duty to be here. First of all, I just want to congratulate you to take the mayor's position, because many do not know you walk into the definition. You walk into it. So by you walking into it, you have to find ways how to clean it up because of other people's mistakes. I really feel it for you. But I have a property in the north end. I work hard as a citizen of Hartford. I pay my taxes just like anybody else. I do all the duty, but by you walking, I'm not blaming you and censor everything, it's just the system, the people from the, not you, the rep, you just came in, but all the folks. I think they need to remove, because they've been there so many years and be constantly doing the same thing over and over with the system. They broke the system down. And then you, I don't want to say you, your name, or fear your name of a person. You have to find ways how to clean up someone else's mistake. I'm angry about it, it's because how you have to find it. No one don't realize, and then they blame, the mayor is not doing nothing. I oftentimes say to people, "You don't have no idea. I need you to just go and sit in a meeting, listen to people, listen between the Democrat and the Republican, and the ones out there. And you don't have no idea what you're talking about." Because you think it's that easy to walk into the House and say, "I'm going to do this, I'm going to jump and do it." It's because you're fighting between so many parties, so many people. Then other people out there is want take, take, take from the city, and they have no idea why they're taking, how it come into place there. So I really feel it for you.
I can't thank you enough for saying that. I really appreciate you saying that. Look, my view is, we're all in this together, and there are some messes we've got to clean up. There are some, look, there are messes in Hartford, in our city, that we have to clean up, and we're working to clean them up and to make some of those big changes. And some of those changes, they happen over a long time. Some of the things that we're dealing with happened 15, 20 years ago that we've got to fix. And you can't fix them overnight, but you can make progress. So we're trying hard at that. The other, the biggest change we need to make, I think, is to get the state of Connecticut to recognize that cities matter.
Yes.
If you look around the country at all of the places that are actually growing jobs and that are getting investment, and where young people are growing up and they're staying, or people are moving in, it's all happening in cities. Massachusetts isn't growing more than Connecticut because Western Massachusetts and the Berkshires are doing well. It's because Boston is growing, and Boston is a strong city. And the same thing is true if you look at any other place around the country. And I think in Connecticut, for too long, we just didn't recognize that cities actually matter for economic growth. And that's the challenge that Representative Arce and his colleagues up there have at the state Capitol, and that we, as a city, have. and that we as a city have. Because we've got to persuade all of the small towns and all the suburbs around us that they actually have an interest in having a strong city. And I think that's the biggest change we're going to have to make. But I think that's one of the reasons why it's so important that we show that we're willing to do difficult things at home. You know, we, for better or worse, there's a perception out there that Hartford's wasted money, right? And the reality is, some money has been wasted. You know, if you look at the Dillon Stadium disaster where two million dollars of city money went up in smoke, you know, that's a disaster. People, as much as I am proud that we got the baseball park done and we got it done by getting the insurance company to come in and pay for the rest of it. As much as I'm proud about that, I don't think we should have built it. And I think a lot of the towns around us look at it and say, if you guys are in this much trouble, what are you doing building a baseball park? And so there is that big perception out there. And that means that we as a city have to try to overcome that and show everybody in Hartford and beyond that we're actually treating taxpayer dollars with respect and doing everything we can to be as disciplined as we can be. And I think that's a part of sending that bigger message that, look, we're going to take care of our house here at home, but we also need the rest of the state to recognize that they got an interest in Hartford. But thank you for saying that.
When I bought my house in Hartford, I am a single payer. When I bought it fifteen years ago, I said to people, I see investment in Hartford. I see growth in Hartford. I see if it's not there, I don't watch the primary. But I have to see what I had in Hartford or what I could gain from Hartford. What I could walk away and say, this is what Hartford did for me and my family. You know, so I just want to congratulate, thank you for the work ahead in front.
Thank you. And what's your business?
I work at Hartford Hospital as a supply associate for over seventeen years.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your kind words and spread the word about, you know, about Hartford. That's the other thing that we all got to do. So, yeah, come on.
Hello, hi, believe it. I don't have any order. I don't know that a neighbor is going to help in knocking on doors to help people clean up the yard and stuff like that. My question to you, is there any other assistance to help neighbors get their building up to code? Because I'm reading this and it seems like when it comes to the, I mean, well, is there any help for neighbors to get their, I'm not talking about big, just like little things just to help fix the outside and stuff like that so they won't get charged ahead of time for the village building and stuff like that? Is there any system like that?
So it depends whether you're talking about big landlords, landlords that own buildings. For three families, there may be some help available. And we encourage folks to reach out to our housing department because there is some Hartford, you know, preservation loan funds and some other things that the city does administer. Sometimes they're usually small grants or small loans that can help homeowners deal with that or help, you know, owners of a home that they're renting out as well. So there are some available. Brian Matthews is the director of the housing department. It's part of our Department of Development Services. And Janice Castle, who I know you know, is sitting right over here, can help put you in touch with them if there's a specific property or a specific person that you want to connect with them. Yes, sir.
First of all, how can I get back to seven stairs from my house? I'm just kidding. The reason I'm here is I voted for you.
Who's the mayor?
And I voted for two reasons. Is that you can put Hartford on a path to solvency and also restore transparency to City Hall. So they stop treating every project as a Manhattan project. But, you know, that's why I didn't agree with Kevin Venese's article. But I know somebody wrote, sent a letter refuting it and I don't agree with him anyway. My question is about bankruptcy. Are we still thinking about it? I mean, you know, because bankruptcy now is a solid problem. It's going to create a lot more because, you know, it's going to be a new day, but it's going to be like, hey, the party start all over again. You know what I mean?
Well, so it's, I'm glad you asked the question. And I'm going to say upfront, I'm going to be a little bit careful about how I answer. But I don't know if everybody could hear, but the question was about bankruptcy. So here's my view. What I want to do is be successful as a team with our legislative delegation and legislators around the state in getting the state of Connecticut to recognize that you can't make a city work when you got less taxable property than the suburbs next door. If we can succeed at that, then we can avoid going down that road. And as I said before, we're going to fight with every ounce of energy we have to try to get that extra revenue from outside the city in, from outside of Hartford into Hartford, to compensate us for all that non-taxable property that we've got. That's the first plan. If that doesn't work, as I said before, what we have to recognize is there's not a responsible way that we could close a fifty million dollar hole with cuts or with tax increases. I mean, everybody here knows that our small businesses in particular, they get crushed by the tax burden. It's hard to get them to stay and it's really hard to get them to move in. Because they're paying two or three times as much in taxes here as they would be if they moved three or five miles down the road. So we cannot raise the mill rate and cause our small businesses to go out of business. There are the companies that, I talk about our small businesses because, look, our biggest companies, they can probably deal with the property tax increase. But our small businesses are the ones that employ Hartford residents more often. And they cannot deal with any more taxes. So if you can't raise taxes, that means you can't raise revenue that way. You also can't cut fifty million dollars out of a city budget that's as lean as ours already is. You know, when we cut, closed to twenty million out last year, that was tough. There isn't fifty million more to cut. So where does that leave us? Again, I hate even talking about bankruptcy because I don't want to go there. I want the state to work with us to put together a solution. But it's important to recognize that what bankruptcy means potentially is that if the state won't come in and help us, that it won't be Hartford residents and Hartford businesses that are bearing all of that pain. Because what bankruptcy means is that some of the bondholders that bought, that lent money to the city and some of the pensioners, you know, wherever they live, in many cases outside the city of Hartford, they've got to be part of the solution too. So it's not an option that I want. I'm going to fight hard to avoid it. But it's important to recognize that in bankruptcy, we continue to operate just like a city. We continue to provide basic services. We continue to basically provide everything. Nobody can force us to cut services more than we've cut them. Nobody can force us to raise taxes. It's a negotiation with all the stakeholders, including your creditors and everybody else. And again, I want to say, I'm not saying that to advocate for it. Because Plan A is and is going to continue to be to get what we need from the state.
Is the Hartford budget now is dependent on the state budget?
Yeah, yes. So our budget, it is. I mean, we're going to adopt our budget on Monday. No, this coming Monday. It starts, the fiscal year starts on July first. So the new fiscal year that we're budgeting for starts on July first. But we have to adopt our budget by May thirty first. And since council has already voted on my budget, I actually have two days to get them my response back, so that'll be tomorrow. And then on Monday, I expect that the city council will adopt a budget formally. Now, in that budget, as I said earlier, is going to be a big gap that relies on revenue from the state. And that's why we've got to fight so hard to get that money. Now, it's important to remember, also, we should acknowledge that our three big insurance companies, the Hartford and the Travelers, they pledged to come forward with ten million dollars per year for the next five years as part of a comprehensive solution. So in an ideal world, we'd be getting ninety million dollars from the state and we'd be lowering our mill rate and they'd be coming on top of that. In reality, given what the state's dealing with, you know, if the state can get us, you know, up beyond forty million dollars, then those three companies are going to come in with an extra ten and help close that gap.
Ten total or ten each?
Ten, well, ten total per year, but it's for five years. So it's basically, you know, three point three million per year for five years from each company. And that's, of course, on top of the taxes they pay, which is actually a pretty hefty amount. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
You know, we're going to keep fighting, but it is important for everybody to understand that if in the end, we don't succeed, that the city's going to continue to deliver services. We're going to continue to operate and, you know, we're going to continue to make sure that we are fulfilling our obligations to the residents of the city.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So I own a few houses in Hartford. And they're not in the greatest areas in Hartford because, you know, Hartford's got very different neighborhoods. My concern is some of the rent that I can get on my house that I think I can max out per apartment is a lot less than other places that you can get a higher rent. But the taxes seem to be the same, so I mean, I'm hoping that there's no more taxes that I can, you know, that they can squeeze me for because if I can only rent a two-bedroom in a part of Hartford for seven hundred, that's, you know, it's either I rent it for seven hundred or it goes vacant. But there are some parts of Hartford that you can get a two-bedroom, maybe a thousand dollars. But we still say, pay the same taxes and I don't know if this is how the city can, how they can compensate or do something with that because I know it's a very difficult thing.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I can say is, if you haven't done it already, you can go to the tax assessor and may have missed the window this time around, but you can file a tax appeal on the assessment. I can't get involved in assessments, but the tax assessor, okay, you did.
Well, to follow up, I just bought a four-family that's blighted that's been sitting on the market for a few years. The taxes, over twelve thousand dollars.
Back taxes owed?
No, no, that's what the taxes are per year. So it's going to take me about a year to fix this house, but I still have to pay twelve thousand dollars on taxes, which, you know, it's not, they had it valued, I think, or assessed at like over two hundred thousand, which does, you know, really didn't make sense.
But you did file, you filed an appeal.
Well, I just bought it last week.
Okay.
So I guess they're saying the appeal was a few years ago.
So you should come in and talk with the tax assessor and see if there's anything that they can do legally and within the limits of their authority. Again, Janice can help put you in touch with the tax assessor's office. And to the extent that you're making investments, new investments in blighted property, I'd be happy to get our development service team to talk with you to see whether there are other ways in which we might be helpful. Obviously, we want to get blighted property turned around. That's important. And we don't want to create barriers to folks who are making investments in blighted property to get it back online and, you know, operating and living and tax paying, so.
I've done over the last three years, maybe five projects in the city of Hartford zone. But it's, you know, it seems easier for me to just go my route instead of going to the city. It's not always easy to do in the city.
If you're getting it done anyway, then I agree with you.
It's harder and it costs me more, but it seems the headache that I get from doing it myself is, you know.
Well, we were able to use federal grant money this year to establish a blight office, a blight director, a blight enforcement officer under that and another blight specialist who are all focused one hundred percent on blight. And so if you're doing multiple blighted properties around the city, you know, I think they probably would welcome the chance to talk with you about it. Even if it's just to learn from, you know, what obstacles you encountered and how they can help others do it better. So I would encourage you to reach out to them and, you know, at minimum, have a conversation.
I guess I have a date with their name.
There you are. Yes, sir.
Just quick, I have two questions, actually. How many liquid assets does the city of Hartford actually own? And also, what is like, what is like your long-term goal? You know, I wish we would have sat down like, you know, I don't know, a couple of weeks after your inauguration. I'm a young guy. I have a very large online base. Just wanted to connect with you. What is your solution for Hartford?
Sure. So the first question about liquid assets. Liquid meaning that we can easily sell and get money for them. The answer's not a lot. You know, we have, I'll give you an example. We have five twenty-five Main Street is a city-owned building. It's a red brick, four-story red brick building across from City Hall. You know, it's a pretty good location. It's right there on Main Street. We put it out to market this year. We did an RFP on it. And the bids that we got back were not great prices, you know, for that building. And so we have to make the decision then about whether it's in the interest of the city to sell it for a price that we don't think is really what that property ought to be able to get or whether we decide we want to hang on to it because at some point down the road, we hope there'll be a developer who's willing to pay more and can really turn it into something that's paying a lot of taxes. So that's a calculation we have to make on those properties. Most of the properties we own are school buildings. Now, that's the bulk of what the city of Hartford owns. And as you probably know, the Board of Education and the new superintendent are going to be doing a process to look at all of the facilities we have as a city. A lot of those facilities are under-enrolled. You know, we have a lot of facilities that are, you know, maybe only have a half or a third the number of students that they were built for. So they're going to be looking at that. And we may have a challenge in saying, okay, if a school, if there's consolidation, what are we going to do with that school to make sure that it doesn't just become an empty building in the middle of the neighborhood? And we're going to have to work on that. But those are examples of tough buildings to sell, right? If you have an empty school, it's not easy or obvious for a lot of people what they could do with it if they bought it. So we have assets, but they're not necessarily easy to sell to get real value for.
Just to chime in, do you feel like the private sector or the non-for-profit sector can step in? I've already seen like a lot of people kind of making that move in Hartford or even just communities. I think a lot of people are just, you know, I'm not too sure throughout like the tour that you have or on the city of Hartford, but I do feel to some extent that communities and people that have access to whatever said business, whether if it's for profit or non-for-profit, they can actually step in and actually make the move.
To buy properties and?
Well, yeah, I mean, like, you know, I'm pretty sure you know or people like on your development team know, like through the development department, they, you know, they put up stuff for auction on government surplus sites, but I don't really see enough of it coming from Hartford.
Yeah. I mean, again, part of the answer is we just don't have that much, we don't have that much to sell.
Seen a lot of cars last year.
We did do vehicles because we, because we did a review of one of, you know, as part of the example of, you know, the sort of the dozens of things that we're trying to change. Kevin said, we don't need all of these fleet vehicles. We, as a city, we don't need a fleet this big. So let's figure out who actually needs to have a city vehicle. In some cases, you know, union contracts define who gets one. But where we can, let's figure out who actually needs a vehicle and then let's shrink the fleet. So we were able to auction, you know, a number of those cars. But we don't have a ton of property to sell and we do do RFPs. Usually, as I said, it's either buildings or it's vacant land. So I'll give you a couple of other examples. You know, at the corner of Albany and Woodland, there's a lot that's been vacant for a long time. There's also one at the corner of Park and Main. Those are both city-owned properties that I think are at really strategic locations. They're really important locations for the city. And so we're working hard to try to market those. We actually went out with RFPs on the Woodland and Albany site a couple of times. Again, we didn't get the responses that we're looking for. But we're continuing to go out there and try to get developers to come in and get interested. The other thing that's important to just recognize is that most of the development that's happening in Hartford right now is subsidized in a lot of cases by state dollars. So CRDA is the Capital Region Development Authority. You know, they're the ones that have provided some financing alongside private money, but some financing to get projects like the Cape Well Building down on Charter Oak Avenue or the old Hartford Office Supply Building on Capitol Avenue, you know, or the old Bank of America Building on Main Street, to get those back to life. They've been doing a lot of work there. But they are subsidizing those buildings. And unless they were subsidizing it, the private developers wouldn't be doing it. So to get to your question, you know, about the broader vision, let me start by just saying what I, I think sometimes when you're talking about a vision, it's important to just have a mantra that you kind of repeat over and over and even yourself to remember what your building is. I mean, to me, what we ought to all be trying to build is a city that is the heart of this region of more than a million people and to make sure that all of the residents in Hartford, regardless of what neighborhood they're in, feel that they're a part of that rise. That's what we want to build. Now, how do we get there? Look, first of all, we've got to get solvent, right? We've got to get solvent and stable. Because you can't build and you can't attract investment if you're always under the cloud of a crisis. So we've got to clear that cloud and we've got to get the city solvent. And then we got to get stable and begin really growing. And so first part of that... And so first part of that is the one that, the mission that we're on right now. We've gotta get the solvency, and we're gonna fight as hard as we can to get there as quickly as we can, 'cause once we get there, then I think you can start building momentum. And I actually think there are a lot, there's a lot of reasons to think that we can, we can be successful in building that momentum if we clear those clouds. You know, it's, whether it's, you know, the Streetscape project on Albany Avenue that's mostly federally funded, that's gonna do a big chunk of Albany Avenue after twenty years of planning for it, whether it's the library in Frog Hollow, you know, on the corner of Park and Broad, that's gonna help anchor that, that corner, whether it's the residential conversions of those old blighted buildings like Cape Well and Capitol Ave that start to bring some neighborhoods back, or if you look down at Coltsville, you know, where that whole neighborhood is, has in some ways come back to life after being abandoned and blighted for a long time. Parkville, where there's, you know, you have the new breweries setting up, and you have some creative industry and entrepreneurs coming in. The, the old Swift Factory, which, you know, has the risk of being a, a blighted building for a long time, which I think we're actually on the verge of being able to get that project done, so that it begins to, instead of being a blighted building, be a beautiful building right there at five, you know, at the five corners. So there are projects around the city, and that's not all of them, I could keep going, but there are projects around the city that I think will start to generate some excitement all around the city. We've gotta get the solvency first, because then we have a foundation that we can build on.
Mayor Bronin, my question is regards to a very hot topic that's been in the news in the past few weeks, and it's about our seniors here in the city. As you're aware, we have four senior centers, and the issue is of possibly reducing the budgets at four centers, as well as reducing the dollar line by twenty-five percent. This is the second time in the last seventeen months in your time as mayor that you're dealing with this challenging question of what to do, should we reduce, should we not? Last year, you and the council made a good choice in not reducing the budgets, the Court of Common Council has decided this time not to make those reductions. The decision now comes back to you to make a very hard decision. When you start to look at what you have to do now, and you look at years going forward, and you look at the senior population growing in the city, what can you take into account that this issue doesn't continuously come to you as our city continues to deal with extreme debts?
Sure.
Is there anything as stakeholders that we can do?
Yeah, I think a couple of things. I mean, first of all, part, the first part of the answer to the question is the same as the last part, right? How are we gonna avoid being in that quest, that, that position where we have to always be looking at what, where we need to reduce our services or expenditures? It's by getting solvent, it's by fixing that big structural problem, one way or another. It's by, put it another way, it's by not kicking the can. I mean, one of the problems is that the, our city has kicked the can over and over and over again, and the problem is, the cliff that's at the end of that just keeps getting bigger. So you can't kick the can forever, and that's, that's the first answer to that question. We've gotta deal with it, and hopefully deal with it now, so that we can get past it. You know, our senior centers are hugely important, and I've, I've visited all of them many times, and, and they are, you know, they are oases, just like, just like our library branches are oases in our neighborhoods, our senior centers are too. But I do, I do believe, let me put it this way, I don't believe that there, there are very few places in the world, very few operations or organizations or anything else, that can't figure out how to save a little bit of money. I, I do believe that. And I do believe that our senior centers could actually figure out how to deliver the same level of services that they provide and save a little bit of money doing it. But I think everybody knows the reality is that if you don't need to find that savings, then you don't find it. So I can't, I can't tell you, you know, for sure what I'm gonna do on the council actions, but I will say what can you do? I would say, do everything possible to, to really make sure that your operation is as efficient as possible. We all have an obligation to do that. I mean, just because an organization is doing a really important thing, doesn't mean that they don't have an obligation to figure out how to do that really important thing more effectively and more efficiently. And I, I get it, those are hard conversations to have, right? No politician wants to go and say, "Senior centers, you gotta find a way to cut money." But in this environment, when we're making so many difficult reductions, I just think everybody's got a responsibility to step up and figure out how to do a little bit more. And the other thing I would say is, see whether there's private sources of funding out there too, because much of the time, if you look hard enough, there actually are some private sources of funding. It takes effort, it takes time, but a lot of times, there is private money out there. And, and I will tell you, you know, again, and this is not in any way to say, you know how, I, I know how important what the, the work that our senior centers is. But just to put in perspective, if you look at some of our other cities like ours, including, including New Haven, they spend a lot less, and they still do deliver a lot of service. So all I would say is, I recognize how important they are, and I think it's important that everybody do whatever they can, even when what they're doing is vitally important, to see if they can do it a little bit more cheaply and effectively. Sure.
Oh, cool. I got a few questions, actually. One, I personally don't know what your plan is, your budget plan that you have. I know the last budget I heard you was cutting, cutting funding from school, and I don't know, like, I heard that.
No, we haven't, we haven't cut any funding from schools. The city, yeah, I mean, the school board has had, the school board, the Board of Education has their own budget process, right? They're, they're responsible for putting together the Board of Education's budget. And they have a deficit, just like the city has a deficit. So, you know, they've got a deficit because their funding has basically stayed flat from the state and from the city, but you know, their costs, like union contracts and other things, has gone up, so that means they've got a deficit that they have to figure out how to close. But the city has not cut funding to the Board of Education.
All right, well, I was listening for it, I appreciate that.
Sure.
My next question, do you have anything to do with the potholes? Listen, I gotta ask.
I don't have anything to do with creating them, but I am supposed to have something to do with fixing them.
Yeah, my car keeps getting, like, tore up in the street.
I know.
They keep seemingly, like, they fix the same potholes over and over and go, and don't fix the ones that are really screwed up. I, my street, or Reading Street, the goddamn potholes ever been fixed for damn near, I don't know, I've been here ten years, maybe one time they came out and looked at it. That's another thing, parking. That's something I, I say for the parking enforcement.
No, go ahead with parking.
Nah, my issue with my street personally, I don't know about anybody else's street, my street is a one-way street. We have no parking, we are complexes, houses, and apartment buildings, if you will, mostly. We can only park on the street. There's works to bank, but they don't allow us to park there. Monday mornings, the trash people come, they're done before nine o'clock, trash and recycling. Well, our parking enforcement, they come around ten o'clock. Anybody parked on the street afterwards always winds up with a ticket. Now, I get that you know you need time, but our trash people come early. There's no place like me, I work their shit.
Yeah.
And then I also go to school, so in between, I go to my mother's house to get that. I got no place to park my car, and I can't park on the street over or the street over because, once again, they have the same regulations. Is there anything I can?
Sure, so, so let me talk about both, both those things. On the potholes, you know, that is our Department of Public Works, that's their, that is their, part of their mission, and they are, like a lot of other places, they're understaffed, and I can't deny it, and that's because of what we're, what we're dealing with. Although I will say, even when they were fully staffed, we had a lot of potholes. Right now, I've had a conversation actually with our, with our acting director, who's Jake Freeman, about, about that, and they've been, it's something that he's working on. That's all I can tell you. With respect to Reading Street specifically, I will encourage you to call 311, and I know a lot of people...
Download the app.
Download the app, even better. Download the 311 app, and you can take a picture of, you know, of what you're talking about, you can send it right in. And I know that sometimes people get frustrated with 311, but what I can promise you is that we, we have overhauled the, the 311 process, and we're taking it a lot more seriously. So it's a good way to get, if you have specific issues or specific complaints, it's a good way to get it on the department's radar screen, and also put it into a system that I can then see and hold them accountable, if I know that they haven't addressed it. So I would encourage you to do that. On the parking, it's, it's a great point, and, and we do need to, I think, figure out whether there's anything we can do about the timing problem. You know, people, we do need to have cars gone in order for trash to get picked up, right?
I understand.
But, but as you say, if the trash has already been picked up, then people don't necessarily need to get tickets. The problem there is that you gotta do coordination between two separate agencies, because the Hartford Parking Authority does the tra, the parking enforcement, and the Department of Public Works is doing the trash. You could say that they ought to know whether the trash is picked up just by looking at the trash can.
They do. They definitely do, 'cause they come back in circles, and they'll, and they'll come back in circles again.
So that, I appreciate you raising that, I will bring that up with the Hartford Parking Authority, because, you know, if the, if the reason to have cars off the street is to let sanitation crews do their job, if that job has been done, I agree with you, people shouldn't be getting tickets. So I will talk with our, I will talk with the Hartford Parking Authority about that.
I, I just have a question about the Hartford Parking Authority. Do they have the authority to go around and give out tickets, or just on trash day?
Well, they have the authority to, to give out tickets where there's a violation of parking ordinances. So, you know, if, if you're in a, if, for example, if you're in an area that requires residential parking permits, and someone's parked without a residential parking permit, then yes, they can ticket, you know, or if somebody's parked illegally in front of a fire hydrant, you know, anywhere in the city, they could give out a ticket.
So you can call them, and they'll come out and give a ticket?
Oh, you can call them to ticket? You want, you want somebody ticketed?
Not so many.
Are they private?
What's that?
Are they a private?
They're, they are, they are independent of Hartford city government.
So they're contracted through the city?
No, they're not contracted, they're established by state law, so they're a quasi, they're a quasi-public agency. So they have a board that's appointed by the city, and those board members serve on a term, so I've appointed a couple of, some are still from prior administrations. There's a board, but they operate, aside from having a board that's appointed, they operate independent of the city, and that's established by state law.
Can I ask a scenario with parking? Say, you park in in front of a hydrant, but the car is on and you're in the car, and wait for the bus, can you say? Um, you wait for the bus, the engine is still on, you're in the car. Can you, should you get a ticket?
You're in the car, in front, with a car on, in front of a fire hydrant, waiting for the bus?
Waiting for the school bus.
Oh, the school bus.
Car is on, but you park in front of the hydrant.
You're not supposed to even stand in front of fire hydrants, but, you know, but I will say, you know, I, I would hope that people would be understanding, and the HPA would be more, would be more understanding, so...
But they keep issuing a ticket?
They issued you a ticket right there while you were standing in the car?
Yeah, and they, yes, they do.
Okay.
And this is the parking authority? See, I, I don't really understand what they do.
A few questions. Can you explain the pilot program, why it's not being funded?
Sure.
Secondly, I always think, worst-case scenario, what if the city does go bankrupt? And then, thirdly, when you go to the state capitol, do you need people to go with you as far as residents, others, people in the state? How, how can people get involved with that?
Thanks for, for asking that. You know, when I'm, when I'm in other towns, talking about why they should be focused on Hartford, the answer to that question is, I encourage people to call their legislators and tell them that, that it matters to them, that what happens to Hartford matters to them. In, in our case, since you live in Hartford, our delegation is, is one hundred percent there. I mean, they're working hard to make it happen, so I don't think you need to call them. If you see them, just say thank you for trying. But they're, they're working hard to do it. What I think you can, can do, if you've got friends who are outside the city, spread the word to them. I mean, this really is about trying to build a coalition beyond the city of Hartford to help make the changes inside the city of Hartford. That's what, that's what our, our challenge is. And so if you've got friends, family, anybody outside, or whether it's social media or anything else, just work on spreading that word about why having a strong Hartford matters to the entire region, the entire state. That's, that's the, the first part. And then, the second part, you know, I, which was about bankruptcy and worst, worst case, you know, like I said, we're gonna do everything we can to avoid it. If we don't get what we're looking for, what I can tell you now is, my priority is gonna be making sure that we can continue to deliver the services that our residents deserve without increasing our mill rate on our small businesses in particular, and without cuts that, you know, just make it impossible for us to, to deliver what our residents deserve. That'll be my, my goal, and I think, you know, that, that's what all of us will have to pull together to do.
So, like, do you know the, like, number of people that are working currently in Hartford that do not live in Hartford?
Yes, about ninety-three thousand.
Okay, so ninety-three thousand is about a hundred and thirty-something thousand people, right? Wouldn't there, like, I don't know, maybe this is me just kinda free, you know, just freely, just kinda coming off the head here, should we come up with like a creative way to tax those people? 'Cause I mean, think about it this way, Hartford's mill rate is, I forgot what the number is, but it's pretty up there.
Seventy-four point two, yes.
Yes, it's up there. I think we should come up with like a payroll tax for Hartford or something, I don't know.
So, yeah, I mean, which is another, another way that's, that's sometimes called a commuter tax. So let me, let me, let me start by saying it this way. Like I said before, to deal with this problem, that we have less taxable property in the city than Glastonbury or Manchester, we do need revenue coming in from outside of the city end. I think the best way to do that is with sales tax, is to have a portion of the sales tax revenue coming from all around the state to the places that need it most, to the Hartford's and the Bridgeport's and the Waterbury's and the New London's and the New Britten's. That's what, the way I think we should do it. The reason that I have concerns about a commuter tax or about a payroll tax is that if we're gonna be able to ultimately lower taxes across the board, it's gonna be by growing. We have to grow the city, and we have to get more people to invest in the city, and more companies to move here, and more employers to set up here. And we are already dealing with a problem right now, which is that we're not competitive 'cause our property taxes are so high. And if on top of that, we then say, for moving into the city and paying the high property taxes, your employees are then also gonna get taxed for the privilege of working in Hartford where we want you to be, I think we're gonna be having an even bigger competitiveness problem. So I would rather figure out ways to get everybody around the state working with us to make Hartford strong, rather than putting more burden on companies that have already decided to be loyal to Hartford and stay here.
Yeah, just to chime in real quick, so, like, I don't know if you're aware of like blockchain technology or Bitcoin? Actually, I think that just alone with our little group page on Facebook, we have over a hundred people just in Connecticut that signed up for it alone. So, sales tax, I don't think should be necessarily the route, but you're gonna have like a lot of businesses trying to, actually, there's a couple in downtown Hartford restaurants that accept Bitcoin. So, just to kinda throw that out there. Also, I went to like a networking event, well, it wasn't a networking event, it was by Reset, it was at the Mark Twain House.
Can I just ask, I wanna make sure I understand your point. Are you saying that because people using Bitcoin, they're gonna evade taxes as they don't, as they're using Bitcoin, instead of...
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, but hear me on this, right? So, no, it's fine, I think you should know. Adam Poldax should know. So another thing, my thing is that we have a lot of non-for-profit groups like Reset, right? Yesterday, I noticed on the panel, the people that were pitching to get the thirty thousand bucks, right? And I think Reset actually took some great money too, right? If that was the case, when you were on Pratt Street. My biggest problem is that we have non-for-profit groups like that, that do not have community outreach, right? Let's say they were to create programs within the high schools for like juniors and seniors to transition to have a startup, we can have more companies be at those events like I was at yesterday, right? And the majority of those companies were not even, those guys are not from Hartford, you see? And we have people like that just pitching for five minutes, and then they're able to speak in front of a panel of whatever people, investors, right? And have an opportunity to pitch their idea, kind of like Shark Tank, to possibly get thirty grand. There's no outreach from those companies at all. And I think there's, like, I, I hear what you're saying, but it's also frustrating when I see young kids that I'm trying to help out on the streets, whether if it's like referring them to a place to do a job or whatever it is, hooking up with someone I know. It's just too frustrating. It's very, very frustrating. I don't know. I, I, I think, like, instead of attracting more outside companies, we should focus on what's here.
No, I, I, I hear you and I, and I agree with that.
There's plenty of creatives and, and like-
Yeah, I, I hear, I agree with that. And just a couple of points. I mean, I think there, you know, one of the things that we're really trying to do is, uh, we, let me step, this past week, we presented at the finals of a state grant effort called the Innovation Places Grant. And it's focused specifically on that. Now, how do we make Hartford a center of innovation where people can actually build their businesses and grow here and get the support and the help that they need to do it and potentially get connected to investors as well? And we're, and we're focused on three particular areas, you know, building on our strengths, right? One is insurance tech, you know, technology associated with insurance is actually a really big and growing area. That ought to be a, something that's growing here. We've got a concentration of insurance companies, we should be growing that here. Aerospace, aerospace tech, and we, as a, beyond Hartford, in East Hartford and, and the greater Hartford area, we're actually a national center for aerospace manufacturing, for high, uh, you know, for, for high skilled, uh, advanced manufacturing. There too, there's a lot of innovation, uh, right now in, in the techniques, uh, and in the supply chain. So, that's the second piece. And the third piece is medical technology and partnering with, with Hartford Hospital and Trinity partnered together uh, to help grow companies, uh, that, that will set up here in Hartford and grow in that industry where we got some strength. There are also, uh, groups like Makerspace CT, which is working to set up a Makerspace down in Coltsville. And a Makerspace is a big, uh, in this case, a pretty big space that's got very high quality manufacturing equipment. So that if you have an idea, something that you want to create and you can't afford to buy, you know, a precision lathe or some other tool that's needed, you can go in there and use it and subscription. What's that?
Are they, is it gonna be the use or is it gonna be certain criteria for them to get in there?
Well, there's gonna be subscription, subscription. You know, you got, you have to, you sort of, you, you, you pay a fee to be able to use it, but, but it's, but it's a lot less than having to buy the equipment that you otherwise would never have the ability to get.
I understand, but realize, most of the youth that have these ideas don't have the money to fund that.
Well, if the idea's good enough, I bet they can find somebody who'll give a subscription to build it. You know, look, I mean, remember, a, a business, in order to be successful in the end, what makes a business successful or an entrepreneurial venture successful is the idea stands on its own. That the idea attracts private investment who see the potential in it and make it happen. And then you gotta have a business developer and an entrepreneur who really knows how to take that from idea to creation. No government can create an entrepreneur. You can help create an environment in which entrepreneurs can get connected to investors or connected to, uh, you know, equipment that they can use, but no government can create an entrepreneur. So that's what we're focused on, is trying to create that environment which entrepreneurs can be successful.
I got one last question.
Sure.
I noticed a lot of abandoned buildings that are owned by the city of Hartford that's around. I was wondering, is there a list to get a hold of to take, cause personally, I wanna take some of them, cause I have a company myself and I'm about to make it a nonprofit company. They're taking it, making it into some homeless shelters that have to-
Can you keep it a for-profit company?
Nothing we need anymore in our profit. Really, why I wanna keep it a for-profit company, cause I don't wanna keep paying all these taxes.
So I tell you, that's the kind, uh, that's the kind of tax evasion I'm worried about more than Bitcoin.
See, my, my, my thing is, and my, cause it's mostly coming from my personal pocket.
Uh-huh.
Cause what I wanna do is, it's not gonna make me no profit. It's mostly to help the homeless, help the adolescents that are running around Hartford that got nothing to do. Cause honestly, all you have is the Y and maybe the boys and girls, there's no really after-school programs, there's no nothing. Nobody really funds anything.
I, well, the thing, that part I disagree with. There's a lot of funding coming into those big organizations. So the one thing I would say is, if you think that you have the ability to reach some of those kids that they're not reaching, then partner with them. I mean, go to them and say, here's an idea for how we can reach these kids and here's how we can help. But, but work with them, work with them to do it. Uh, and there are a lot of other places out, but work with them.
They have a very good program, it, it run by the city, OPP. They're taking new kids, take them to school, give them a train, give them things what to do. And every year, it runs every year wrong. And it even not taking them, they have the high school and also they take them to college. And it do not finish with those kids until they're completely on their own. Even when they meet 25, 26, OPP, right, I know it.
Like, like I said, OPP has holes in it too. Where any company, which is understandable, but my issue with OPP, not everybody can get into that.
Because it's-
What I'm looking for, what, what I wanna do is for those children that can't get into the Y, that can't get into the boys' kid, that can't get into, for the kids who just run around, like, they have, not to say they have a behavioral issue, but they have a behavioral issue. I don't, I never wanna classify nobody like that.
Well, be a mentor to them.
I can't mentor 30, 300 of somebody's kids, miss them, just me.
Well, it takes one, it takes one to break the clock. And then you start with a mentor, either by mentor, then you work, reach out to, to store owner. You gotta come up with creative ideas. You set a proposal and there was, you set a proposal, you said, this is what I start. And you have to be general with it and say, okay, this is my proposal, I wanna start with it. You could start with 1,000, say you're embracing, tw- because you can run 360 kids.
Listen, I wasn't, my thing is, my, my original first, the first thing I wanna do first is, is to get a house to help. It's not also, it's to help take the, cause you know what? I know a lot of, there's a lot of homeless people who lost their, who lost their house and home because they couldn't pay. And they lost their job and everything. Doesn't mean they don't have the skills to get back into work, they just don't have a place to do it. And they, I've been homeless myself, so I know that they go through depression and they, they don't have a place where they can stay clean. And once you try to get into the homeless system, it is very difficult, very difficult.
Talking about rehabilitation.
I, I admire your, your desire to listen and I, if it's something you think you can build, you should build it. I, I mean, I, and, and in terms of your first question about, is there a list of city property? There is, I mean, it sounds like, uh, you, you, your friends got it, but, um, uh, there is a list of, of city property, uh, that's out there. Again, there's, there's not as much as you think.
I mean, I've just seen the abandoned buildings that I see down in North, right there.
No, I know, but most of them are not city-owned. They may be abandoned, but most of them are not city-owned.
They're bound over there on the city.
I buy them off the city and make property out.
Back to the, um, bankruptcy issue. So will property value lose its value if the city goes bankrupt?
Look, I, I-
I, I understand.
Let me say this, if, if we, if we ever go down that road, I'm gonna, I'll have 100 pound hauls all about that. I, I don't wanna talk too much about that because our goal is to avoid it, right? But, uh, but, let me put it this way, in the places that have gone through that, most of them have come out stronger on the other end. But that's because they didn't have another solution, right? Our first best, our best solution would be to, to get the state to work with us. I mean, look, my, my, the biggest problem that I have with, with bankruptcy is that it's a black eye on the state of Connecticut. You know, it's gonna, I think it's gonna be a huge, um, I, I think it's from the reputation of our state, it would be a big problem. Uh, that's the, the biggest concern that I have about, about that.
And, and then to the pilot, pilot program, you're saying it's not-
Oh, that's right, you asked about that. So the pilot program, so the way it works is, the, the state has, uh, their, state passed a law many years ago that says the state will fund cities at 77% of the taxable value of hospitals and colleges and 48% of the taxable value of state government property. The problem is, you know, no legislature can bind a future legislature. So even though that's on the books, every time the state passes a new budget, that budget takes precedence over what's in the law. You see what I mean? So, so long as that budget is adopted afterwards, that's what, that's what controls. So there's this formula that's on the books, but what really matters is what's in the state budget. And what's happened is that year after year, that the amount that's actually funded has gone down. Uh, and that's why it's only funded at a small fraction of what's supposed to be funded in that formula. Now, I think the formula is broken to begin with, because to my, you know, from my perspective, there's no reason that cities should be getting reimbursed more for college and hospital property than they are for state property. Especially when you've got such a huge concentration of state property all in one place. You know, I think that's, that's, uh, that, that's detrimental to us and I don't think it makes a lot of sense. So that's the other piece we're working to change. But, but my point is, even if you just funded the, the existing formula, as imperfect as it is, it would still give us $52 million more each year. All right, this is the last, last question.
All right. So where are we at with all the non-tax, I mean, over 50, 50% non-taxable buildings in Hartford? Is that something that can really happen or is that?
What do you mean?
Well, the hospitals, the nonprofits, the, you know, everything that's not paying taxes now.
When you say, is that something that can happen, what do you mean?
Oh, oh, well, it, when we start taxing those-
We can't, we're not allowed to, I mean, under state, under state law.
The law has to be changed.
Yeah, I mean, the law would have to change for us to allow. Now, I will say, the governor's budget proposal would give us the ability to tax hospitals. That's why, you know, when, when the, when the papers and, you know, the press has looked at the governor's proposal, it, it puts us basically close to where we need to be. I mean, it would, this last proposal the governor put out would give us $42 million more than we were getting last year. The way it does that primarily is by taxing, letting, letting us tax the hospitals. Now, look, in, in a perfect world, uh, I still think you'd be doing it in a way that brings money outside of the city end. Because the hospitals, they are big employers of, of a lot of people, including a lot of people in Hartford. Our hospitals actually employ a lot more people than a lot of our other companies, uh, for, you know, Hartford residents than a lot of our other companies. But, but that's, that's a part of that question. Okay, so I'll, you, you will be the, you can be the, the last question. And I will say again that, you know, uh, I do these once a month, these town halls once a month. This month I'm doing three, uh, so I have two more in the next few days. So if there's, uh, you know, if, if there's more that you didn't get to address today, please feel free to come again, but, uh, does that answer your question?
I, yes.
My name is Jay Stan McCauley and, uh, I do business as Light Source Productions. I provide professional services in the area of strategic video communications. First, what we do is we help you craft your message by using what I call the rule of the five W's. Who, what, when, where, and why. We do event documentation, content acquisition, full-scale productions, um, editing, and of course, distribution through our social media television network. And with social media, uh, video is more important now than it has ever been. Whether you're talking big business, small business, nonprofit, church, or just an individual. Uh, let's say, you know, you, you plan, uh, you're planning an event, a wedding, whatever the case may be, but, but let's say a big event, uh, but no video. And you spent all this time, all these hours to put this event on, and maybe 100, 200 people attend the event. But more important than that is that thousands could attend by watching it on social media. But of course, you don't think about this until after the event is over. You can't afford not to capture it for social media. And despite what people think, I am affordable. Give me a call. Let's plan your next video project and share it with the world on my social media television network. I promise you that you will have the attention of one person, me.